Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's ANC 34G regular meeting. My name is Lisa Gore and I call the meeting to order. The time now is 6:36 PM. And we will start with Commissioner introductions going from left to right on my screen. So, starting with you, Commissioner Sherman.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Sherman, Commissioner for Single Member District 02, which is all the way by Rock Creek Park, bordered on the east by Oregon, on the south by Military, on the west by Utah, and on the north by Tennyson, although it does go up to Unicorn Lane and a little past that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore. I'm the ANC Commissioner for 34G 01, which is all of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. So, I have the loop from Pinehurst Circle, a little bit of Tennyson, all the way down Western to Oregon, Oregon over up to Beach. Thanks for coming tonight. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining. My name is Liz Nagy. I'm Commissioner for SMD 07, which is bordered by Military on the north, Nevada on the east, Chevy Chase Parkway to the south, and Reno on the west.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin?
Hi, Peter Goslin. I'm the Commissioner for District 6, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, between Western and Military, back to 42nd Street and Western Avenue there, near Friendship Heights and Peninsula East. Welcome.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, Commissioner Simmons for Single Member District 5. I have legation on the east side through Connecticut to Chevy Chase Circle, all the way back to Broad Branch.
Commissioner Finacy?
Hello, I'm Laura Finacy. I, uh, Single Member District 4, which is between, roughly between Utah, Broad Branch Road, Western, and McKinley, including Lafayette School and Lafayette Pointe Park.
And Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, good evening. I'm Carol Grunwald. I'm Commissioner for SMD 03, which is bounded Utah Avenue on the northeast, 27th Street to the east, Broad Branch to the south and to the west, McKinley on the north, then it jogs north and east along Nebraska where it rejoins Utah.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, in terms of meeting procedures, everyone is online tonight. We're still meeting virtual only until we have additional administrative help. If you have a question that you would like to ask your Commissioners in the portion of the agenda, just use the raise your hand function. You can find that under the React space. If you click on React, there's a little toggle that comes up, and raise your hand is at the bottom of the screen. We ask that, when you ask a question, that you wait until be recognized by the Chair until you ask your question. We also ask that everyone be polite, give neighbors the opportunity to express their views as well as Commissioners. We will usually go by three minutes for Commissioners and three minutes for community members. We have some changes to the agenda tonight, so we should be able to get out on time at 8:45 and no later than 9 o'clock. Bruce said there's a important basketball game tonight. So, with that, Commissioners, I know there's a couple different changes that have come up for the agenda. What changes do you guys have? Please raise your hand, Commissioners. Commissioner Simmons went first. Raise your hand first.
Hi, I would like to ask that we use, that we move National Park Service before Civic Core.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I want to note that we will not have the presentation for the grant application by Mitchell Lilly. In the course of our due diligence, the Office of the Advisory Neighbor Commissions let me know this afternoon that this project does have to be in our Commission area. It can't just be a constituent. So, I am offering to help Mitchell find the right ANC, connect him so that he can make the presentation to that, that group, and offering other assistance to him in his fundraising efforts.
Okay, great. Commissioner Goslin?
I want to add an item that was inadvertently left off the agenda, five minutes or so, for the folks at Listener Home who want to tell us about availability as they open their new 93-unit senior apartments on Western Avenue and 42nd Street on the border of my district.
Okay. And do you want Commissioners Goslin and Sherman? We still have the public space. Do you want, what do you want to go first? National Park Service or Listener Home?
Well, I'd love to get, I mean, I think these, I think both, the public space permit application and Listener Home are very short. And so, I think ideally, we'd get these people in and out before. I think I saw in the email traffic today that Bruce is asking for 20 minutes for the National Park Service.
Well, no, I was asking, it's on for 25, but I was suggesting, as Commissioner Simmons has already offered, proposed, to move it to 7:20. And that's when I indicated that we would try to do that to them if possible. So, that's, I think, when Superintendent Joiner expects to be with us.
Okay. So, you want to do Listener at 6:50, the time for the grant application, and then NPS at 7:20?
And, and the, the, the banks, the cafe, the public space?
That's at 7:05. So, Listener would be 6:50, 7:05 would be Public Space, 7:20 would be NPS.
Ryan Culberson, you're hearing this, I hope. I see you online. I just want to alert you that we've got on, we're going to get on the agenda, and this is where the Chair is saying you'll appear.
Yeah, 6:50, yep.
So, we have.
Is that good, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay. With, with that, I move the adoption of the agenda as amended. All those in favor, Commissioners, just raise your hand. Okay, 7-0, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Nagy, you want to do the adoption of meeting minutes?
Yeah, thank you. I moved that the minutes for March 10th be adopted with leave to make technical corrections. Do I have a second, Peter? Thank you.
Can I ask for technical corrections? Would that be the occasion to enter something into the minutes by way of clarification? Or should I ask that we clarify here?
I think you asked that we clarify here.
Okay. So, so at the last meeting, the March 24th meeting, there was a segment in which we were talking about the 2023 ANC Community Center Library Survey. And I think an impression could have been left that that project was largely mine as opposed to the ANC as a whole. I just want to be sure the record reflects that the ANC 2023 Community Center Library Survey was a Commission-endorsed, a Commission-sponsored, a Commission-conducted survey, and that it wasn't Bruce Sherman's own, just to make sure that's clear for everybody.
Is it worded in the agenda? Any, I mean, is, is a problem with the agenda wording?
The agenda with the minutes, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't recall it being a problem with the minutes, but I'm happy to go back and double-check and make the change if everyone agrees.
Well, having sat through four months of those meetings to draft that, I would love to be sure it's an ANC-wide, it is an ANC-wide effort.
Okay.
So, has everyone agreed that I go back and look? And if it turns out that it doesn't reflect what Bruce just said, I'll make that amendment. So, is there a motion?
Well, I moved that that be included in the minutes if we need to do a motion, whatever.
Okay. And I'll second it.
Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. All right. So, the next part of our agenda, we're at our resident forum where we allow approximately 15 minutes or so for community members to discuss items that are not on the ANC agenda. That would be anything that you guys want to bring up, that you want to bring to the ANC's attention. I know Captain Lieutenant Olivier is here from MPD. If you have questions for him, he's available for discussion. I'm trying to see the folks online and see if there's anyone from Council's office.
There's nothing in the chat at this point.
Okay. Okay. Two hands raised. Mary Callahan and then William Cox. Bill. Mary, you're on mute.
Okay. Is the next ANC meeting not scheduled until May 12?
I think that is the next ANC meeting.
Okay. Then I'm asking that, should there be an issue with the now rumored martial law to be instituted, possibly be instituted by this current White House administration, that the ANC be prepared to hold a special meeting, should there be neighborhood concerns?
Yes. If there is martial law, we will.
No, I'm serious. Such, such serious people as Liz Cheney are publishing about the possibility of this.
Well, I mean, are you specifically for the District of Columbia? I just have not seen a report, Mary, so I'm not familiar with what you're referencing.
Yeah. There may be an emergency. And should that happen, I was kind of hoping that we might have a special ANC meeting.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, we might absolutely so. If we definitely need to do that, we will. That would be something that we would probably want to discuss with the community. And we might have a special meeting prior to our May 12th meeting because we have a lot of things going on with the Civic Core. So, yeah, we'll definitely put that on the agenda if we need to.
I appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I just say, so people understand why we don't have a second meeting in April. It's Easter week. I mean, Easter Monday falls on the day we would normally have a regular meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Let me go to Bill, Ward 3 Mokers.
Hi, my name is Owen Cox. I'm the Ward 3 Liaison from the Mayor's Office for Community Relations and Services. I just have a couple announcements. I wanted to announce my manager Kendall Gibson's office hours, which will be on April 25th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the Palisades Library. We will, we will be having our spring cleanup Saturday, April 19th, at 10:00 AM at Forest Hills Park. There's also an upcoming roll-off day on May 10th at Turtle Park. A roll-off day is where we'll have a large dumpster container so that residents can bring larger items, like a couch or chair or something like that. They can bring that there and have it be taken away. I'd also like to share about my out-of-school time at most.dc.gov for parents who are looking for links to any out-of-school activities for children in, in school. And then if anyone knows of, well, everyone in DC, I believe, knows someone who is in the federal government. So, for those folks who are affected by any recent layoffs and need to get health insurance, DC Health Link will be hosting a health insurance for federal, impacted federal workers pop-up on April 18th, that's Friday, 10:30 AM to 3:30 PM at Cleveland Park Library. And I'll be sharing all of the links in the chat. So, if anyone wants to follow up on those or share them with friends or family who are impacted, please do so. Available for any questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Cheryl Barnes?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I want to confirm that ANC Commissioners received what I forwarded to them, that I sent on behalf of Chevy Chase Voice to the City Council, in particular, City Council members Lewis George and Fruman this past Saturday. Did everyone get that?
I did.
Excellent. So, if CCV is correct that the zoning decision is illegal and not consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan of 2021 and the Chevy Chase Small Area Plan, that indeed, the, while it says moderate, the actual math is medium density throughout the, the set-down and as exhibited by the proposals that we saw at the Community Center. Will the Commission stand up for the community in demanding that the zoning be redone to comply with the Flume and the Comprehensive Plan and Chevy Chase Small Area Plan? That was a mouthful.
Thank you. Any Commissioners?
Did everyone get that?
Yeah. Any Commissioners want to comment on that? Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Ron Khan?
Yeah, hi. I guess everybody can hear me. And thank you for the, for the minute or less. I think I'll take, my ask has to do with the RFP. And I know you're going to talk somewhat about that, around that. Is it okay now to ask, to do the ask? Or should it wait? Because you noted if any of the topics have to do with later information you're going to talk about.
You can ask now. I mean, we are gonna, we are going to talk about it later, but I'm not sure what your question is pertaining.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to be, you know, say it was okay from your perspective. Okay, let me go ahead then. It won't take but a minute. And I, I noticed that the RFP approval process does not include any responsibility of our, of our ANC nor our community. However, it's clear to me that the role of our ANC and our community is critical to the RFP selection process. So, I say without that, there will be no completion of the selection process. This, this absurdity must be changed. Okay? So, my ask is for a strong and direct resolution and a visit with the Mayor to rectify that. Many residents and I will gladly protest with signs in front of the Wilson Building or the Civic Core areas. Your credibility and responsibility to the community should also include an initial, I'd say, two-question survey and possible follow-up. And I'm hoping with minimal manumiss. Anyone, so, given the cherry pick recognition of community interests tied to proposals and as directed by Dumphead, our definitive role should be absolutely non-negotiable. The last time I checked the words Chevy Chase were on the Library and Community Center. I think in unity, we will find the needed strength to do this right. And it's time for the great wait, and it's time for that great wait to be over with no more waiting. Okay? That's the end of my statement. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Owen.
You're welcome.
All right. So, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda. Thank you, residents, for speaking. And I took notes on all of that. So, on our agenda, we have the grant application. But as we discussed previously, that was amended to remove. And we will go forward with the presentation on Listener from, with Commissioner Goslin?
Yes. If you could elevate Ryan Culberson and Ryan.
They just need to raise their hand, and that way, they can come to the front.
Function under React in the menu at the bottom of your screen. And then, is Vicky Davis with you from Urban Atlantic? Or is?
Yes. I am the second Ryan Culberson. So.
And I'm the third.
I don't know if we can change the name or not, but.
Can you raise your hand, Vicky, on your screen?
Well.
Under the React, you see the React function.
Yes, I do. Raise hand. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. And I would ask, yes, if you all leave your hand up during the presentation, that way, you stay at the front of the screen. Okay. And Commissioner Goslin, you said you'd need about five, six minutes?
I think this is, this is really in the hands of the Listener people and their development team. That, the, the building that's been going up at 42nd Street and Western Avenue is about finished and is taking applications. And I think what we're, what the Listener and developers want to talk about is encouraging us to beat the bushes and find people to apply. So.
All right.
The three of you want to go first? Ryan, I suggest you come on, on camera if you're going to speak. Or if you're going to, oh, if you want to present something.
Yeah, I'm presenting. Lisa will be getting from the Listener home, and then Vicky will also be speaking.
Okay. Go for it.
Hi, I'm Lisa Harfoot. I am the Administrator in Training and Director of Resident Services with the listener Louise Dixon-Hart home. And I've been with listener over 18 years, not since 1941, but over 18 years. And we've been your neighbor for over 85 years with the legacy of quality and commitment to the seniors of the District of Columbia. And we're very honored to bring you our new and fully renovated assisted living. We have always focused on quality. Our legacy is five-star CMS rating for outstanding care. And we're rated as outstanding senior liv, uh, living facility with US News and World Report. As many of you know, in 2020, we had a devastating flood inside the building that you're looking at now. And the second and third floors were unoccupied. After an extensive community fundraising support effort, we are happy to be back online. The renovation is almost over, and we have renovated those floors from top to bottom. We'll have 45 brand-new assisted living residents. We will continue our mission to provide affordable assisted living. And what we mean by that is the listener mission is to serve low-income seniors of the district. So, we'll be able to look at people's income and assets, welcome them into our community, and keep them here without discharge should those assets run out. The fully renovated assisted living has ADA compliance. So, we have things like zero-entry showers, high-speed Wi-Fi, cable TV, fully renovated lobby and dining room. And for those who know us, we used to run a one-year waitlist for our assisted living, and we plan to do it again. So, as neighbors, if you're interested in coming into listener's assisted living, or even if you're interested in our skilled nursing care, now is the time. So, we, you can take a virtual tour using our QR codes. We'll put them in the chat. We'll help schedule you for a tour. We'll take an application. But again, we'd like as many people from the neighborhood to sign up as soon as possible because you're the people we would really like to serve. You were patient with us over the course of the last year. So, again, listener's assisted living is up and running. Schedule your tour with us today. Ryan, if you want to show them the next slide, this is me. Again, I'm Lisa Harfoot, not Ryan Culberson. And this is our phone number, 202-966-6667. And the QR code would take you right to our website. So, again, welcome to listener. We're, we're still here at Friendship Heights, and we're ready to serve your community. I'm going to turn it over to Vicky, who's going to talk about the new construction.
All right. I, I get to pick it up from there. So, these might be, at least the outside image might be familiar to you. My name is Vicky Davis. I am one of the founders of Urban Atlantic. And we are now pre-leasing, and we have been for a couple of months since late January. And we already have 97 people on the list. But we typically reach out to our ANC's and ask you that if you have seniors that you know of in the community who could benefit from living with us in our new, it's completely active adult. But we wanted to show you pictures of it. Go back for just one second, please, Ryan. So, full grab bars in the bathrooms. It's really coming along. We expect to deliver. We were supposed to deliver in August or September. We're, we're likely going to be delivering in middle of June. And so, we're really, really excited about this, and we hope that people will come and join us. Okay, go to the next slide, Ryan. So, we always think it's very important to show income limits. Unlike the, the assisted living, this development does have very clear income limits on it. It depends on how many people are in a household. These are all one-bedrooms. They're in the 600 to 650 square foot range. They are fabulous. They're, and the rent started at 1,400. But we also do have some LRSP units from the city that, that serve the 30% of median income. We also have a QRL code. We also have a phone number there. And we have a website that's up. That's www.thelewisdc.com. It's posted on the fence, as you saw earlier. Go to the next one, please. We want to show you a couple of pictures. There are tremendous amenities here. So, we have a community room, which is a mock-up of that is shown on the left. And outside, it has a terrace that faces a really beautiful green area that faces 42nd Street. We have a hobby and game room. We have a fitness center with a yoga area in it. And we have even a salon where you can get your hair done or your nails done. And the apartments, as you saw before, do have bars in the bathrooms. We do have fully accessible units, open concept kitchens. They're bright, they're airy, they have a lot of windows, large walk-in closets, and in-unit washer-dryers and granite countertops. So, we are very excited. We hope to see people from the neighborhood. If you are involved with your church or your synagogue or Washington Interfaith or Chevy Chase Voice or anybody, you know, it, it's always important to try and get as many people who live directly in the community to come as possible as opposed to going to the, to the broader group. And, and we are out to the broader group now, but we, we don't do this kind of outreach except for to our ANC's. And I'd like to thank our ANC's for their support of this. We did get unanimous support of our designs, and so, we're really excited about that. And if you want to start coming for tours, I think we'll start offering them really soon. And we just wanted to tell you, we're excited to be part of your community. And our property manager is Winn Property Management. Okay. Thank you so much for your kindness.
The real Ryan, anything else?
No, they said it all. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right.
All right, outside.
Can we, can we ask questions?
Happy to answer. Yes, happy to answer.
Sure, hi. Well, thank you for presenting. It's an exciting opportunity for lots of people. So, I appreciate getting the briefing. With the income levels, maximum levels that you've indicated, what is your expectation in terms of people in this general area moving into the, to the units?
You know, I'll just say, not totally parallel to your community, but we are in Ward 4 at the parks at Walter Reed. And we have had a lot of people from Ward 4 come into Walter Reed. We have seniors and assisted living there. And so, we have had a lot of local people. We have had people from other wards, but it's pretty heavily concentrated from the ward you're in. And similar to here, we did outreach to probably three ANC's. We have two that are adjacent to the site. And so, it, it's, it can be very important. And, and I think churches and faith-based organizations and also like where, we have Rock Creek Village at, at Walter Reed and, and people, you know, people then move from those organizations and from local homes.
And, and for listener, you've always been a high user of our skilled nursing and our assisted living. As many of you know, skilled nursing and assisted living are not inexpensive. And so, we are more than willing to look at people with assets that need to spend them down, and it is our mission not to discharge. So, once you move into listener's assisted living or nursing facility, you get to stay with us. So, we do see a high, a number of users in the neighborhood who at the end of, or at the high level of care that we provide, do come to the listener home.
Okay. Could you, one of you or several of you follow up with me? Because I would like to provide more detailed information to my constituents. We all have constituencies that tend to skew a bit older in this part of Washington. So, and I have, I think, as many seniors. Of course, we have the Knollwood facility in my Single Member District already. But yeah, if you could send me any information that I can provide, and then I can forward any. But yeah, if you could send me any information that I can provide, and then I can forward anything to you, I'm happy to to spread the word. But just one other quick question. In terms of the people who've already applied, what do you see as a geographic distribution already in terms of people who've expressed interest?
Ryan, do you have that, the real Ryan? Do you, do you have, is that on the list, and can you pull up the list, or is that not, you don't know?
We don't have that info at the moment.
Yeah, I know, we're short on time. You can follow up with me if you'd like.
We'll follow.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Ryan, can you send, are we using your A and C email? How are we following up with you?
Yeah, I'm A and C, I'm three G zero two.
Would all of the A and C members like follow-up from us, or would you like us to do something?
Everybody, yeah.
Vicki and team, I will send all of my colleagues' emails to you as an email, and you can send the information back to us. Okay?
Okay, that sounds fine.
Let me go to Commissioner Finacy.
Yeah. Yeah, my question was similar to Bruce's, so I just want to make sure I understand. So if you had somebody who's with a partner, their income was under sixty-one thousand dollars a year, but they had some assets, they would be eligible, but if you had a slightly higher income but lower assets, you would not be eligible?
So it's a combined test in DC, and I'm not the person who does certifications. I'll say that straight up. But what they do is they take your assets, and they use a rate of return, and they impute income from your assets. So if you have a million dollars in assets, but you only make thirty thousand dollars a year, I'm just making that up.
Yeah.
They would take a million dollars times X percent, and it would equal something, and they would add that to the thirty thousand that you otherwise declared from maybe Social Security or whatever you got it from. And, and the total has to be under those numbers, and those are actually federal guidelines. They're not DC guidelines. It's federal.
Okay, if you, yeah, if you, when you send to all of us, that would be helpful as well. Thank you so much.
You know what would be the best way for people to do that, that's, I think, the most accurate? Is for them to talk to the property management folks, because they have certification specialists, like Vicki Davis should not, or Ryan Colbertson should not be qualifying people to enter these apartments. It should be the management company.
All right. Well, why don't you send the contacts for the management company along?
Yes, sir. It's on the phone number there, so, and it's on the website, so those are the best ways to do it, and we'll send you the presentation. And, and I'm happy to share my cell phone number. You can call me anytime if you want.
And I'd like to do a tour at some point.
Oh, please, tell.
I'll follow up with you.
Okay, great. I'll put in my number, and then you can call me if you wish. And we can go from there.
Thank you.
Ryan was gonna put some things in the chat for all of you to be able to access us.
Yep, you can do that.
Okay. And again, if any of you have questions about Lisner itself and our assisted living or long-term care, I am a licensed clinical social worker, and it's, this is what we do at Lisner. We've done it for eighty-five years. So if people need to know about long-term care and financing, we're more than happy to share with you what we know if you're interested in the facility.
And I'll just tell you, I think the Lisner home has been exceptional partners, and they will be long-term partners, and after a period of time, this part will go back to them. So it really helps build their continuing care campus, and we think the world of that.
We're excited.
Okay, thank you all. We gotta move to our next agenda item. Thank you, thank you. Still with you, Commissioner Goslin, the public space application.
I'm gonna be, apparently, I do not see Eamon Banks online, the developer, the owner of this new restaurant. Eamon, if you are online, I texted you. I assume there's a problem with your schedule. But so let me just remind my commission colleagues. This is about the opening of a new restaurant at fifty-seven, twelve fifty-seven fourteen Connecticut Avenue. We took this up on March tenth, but had, the material was not immediately available. The truth is that Eamon Banks has been absolutely on the mark, getting stuff to the city. And the cities, the now Department of Buildings and the Department of Transportation that manages the Public Space Committee, their technology has eaten the thing. We have finally got a live link to the material online, but I, the review date for this is tomorrow. And so I would like to encourage you to approve a resolution or approve me writing a letter to the Public Space Committee saying we support this application. What the restaurant, what Banks and his colleagues want to do is put a covered but open sidewalk cafe in front of what was Capital One and then Wine and Organic, and what was the that very odd Goodyear storefront that no one was ever in. And that is, they have a beautiful design. I've sent you all the renderings of this. And I believe, I'd asked that they be put up on the website. I'm not sure whether they were or not. In any case, I think this is non-controversial, particularly given that end of Connecticut Avenue is desperately in need of what people keep talking about is activation. It needs people up there. It needs life up there, and it doesn't have it right now. So I'm happy to field questions. Let me see if Eamon has come on.
Commissioners, do you have any, he just came in.
You talk about cutting it short. Eamon, get yourself on camera. Raise your hand.
Got you. I'm sorry. Thanks. Sorry.
All right. You got your Irish screen on.
Yeah, well, I coach youth lacrosse in my, in my extra time.
So look, I've just made the pitch for you, and I've said that the Department of Buildings and the DDOT's online systems have not been kind to you, or frankly, to me. This was, it should have been a very simple thing, but it turned out to be. I've described as I, your plan for a sidewalk cafe. The commissioners all have the new colored rent elevations and so forth.
Great, great.
Add to this in terms of your plans.
Yeah, so when we did the elevations, we tried to keep, you know, we thought that the pyramid that the bank was in really didn't do the building justice, nor did the architects or the, I think, the neighborhoods. What we tried to do is mimic the other side of the, of the building with keeping with those classic windows with the, I believe, with the crosses in them. There's a fancy word for them. We're trying to keep the integrity of that building, and we've found a brick that will match, which I think it goes a long way for keeping that building, you know, while we're doing something new in there and giving it a facelift, it still keeps the classic look of the building. The sidewalk cafe is well within the limits there. There's a lot of room in between the planter and the bench out there. We've got thirty-eight seats that are gonna be there. There'll be a railing around it for the ABRA license. You'll see on the rendering that we've got, those are gonna be sliding glass doors, which will enable us to keep them closed in the weather for the weather, but open them up so there's a flow through the dining room and the bar area to those outside areas without interrupting the ice cream window area.
Yes, one question that I suspect is gonna be asked, so we might as well get it out of the way. What do you intend to do with the parking lot in back? It is a huge challenge, given that there is so much activity at that end of the block. So look, the end that you're willing to bring back to life, but what do you intend to do with the parking lot behind the restaurant?
Well, all of the spaces except for four were designated for the restaurant, and what we will be doing is, I think, if you've seen what Chevy Chase Land Trust is doing is they just built a new parking attendant booth for, I don't know if anybody's ever met Santos who's out there, but what we'd like to do to keep the flow of everything is do a parking attendant, especially on Thursday through Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, to make sure that, one, that the people that are parking there are using it, that, two, we don't get logjammed, and, three, for security reasons. I think that everybody agrees in DC, you know, we want to make sure that everything is flowing there.
Okay, just to stay on schedule, Commissioner Finacy.
Yeah, real quick. It looks like, if I'm reading the diagram right, that they're about twenty feet from the cafe to the curb of Connecticut Avenue for sidewalk. Is that right?
I believe so. I do not have the plan, but we left, the cafe does not go out super far, so that there is still the the minimum in DC is six feet, which would have been two of those blocks. I think there's three. Those are three and a half feet apiece between the bench. Each of those blocks is about three and a half feet. I think there's three of them.
Yeah, I look, it looks like four on your diagram here, so between the tree box and then even farther and so, so, I mean, to me, that seemed like really ample space.
Yes, yes. I believe it's about double of what DC, DDOT calls for, for the cafe thing. And what, if you look at the plan, the handicap access on the pedestrian walk next to the depot, that is not blocked, and that's a big, if you're looking at the plan to, I guess, to the right, where, if you were looking at the building, you'll see that it doesn't block the handicap access of the walkway there from the depot area.
And is there any concerns about noise? Do you have any projections that the noise would go over the ordinance back towards North Hampton, or would it have dampened or attenuated since then?
I definitely think it would be dampened and attenuated since then, plus those doors will not be open all the time. And that'll have a covered, it's a year-round covered patio, so the noise will go up into there a bit. And I think everybody on the Zoom call will know that Connecticut Avenue can be quite noisy. So that, for noise there, this is, I mean, I know that everybody's familiar that we have Millie's and Surfside. This is not a college bar type of deal here. This is, this is our grown-up bistro concept. So, you know, while I do know that on Friday and Saturday nights, people will be there later. We will not be blaring music. We're very aware of the neighborhood there. And again, everybody's gonna, you're gonna be meeting me in person. I'm gonna be there all the time throughout the building. I can't wait to have everybody over there. I love meeting new people, and we've got a really good management team set up for there as well.
Eamon, just so I, to follow on with Laura's question. And the back doors facing North Hampton and the Loopers of Thirty-Ninth Street there, those will not be open. I mean, you're not building anything back there. There was further in the CVS parking lot when there were a deck built in the back, and neighbors on Thirty-Ninth Street had a lot of complaints. In any case, you're not, those are gonna be closed doors, and you're not gonna, I mean, you can go in and out, but you're not using that space back there for seating.
No, no. Our back kitchen, one of our kitchen doors does back up to there, so there will be trash being taken out back there where the dumpster is. So I think was, somebody was asking me what we're gonna be doing about that. And I really don't like the look of it. I'm probably gonna be asked if I can put a fence around it. As well, those back, we'll call them the North Hampton side doors. Not only are the doors don't, they open into a vestibule that is conditioned air. So you've got the two doors that will open, and then there's a vestibule, and then two more doors into the restaurant.
Commissioner Grunewald, we need to get, we need to move this relatively quickly to stay on schedule, but.
I apologize for being late, by the way. I'm very sorry.
Just a quick question. What are your operating hours, please?
We will be open for lunch, starting at ten thirty AM, and we will serve until midnight during the week, and then we will serve, the intention is to have a place that does serve food later for everybody. I think DC has been shutting down way too early, and we are, when we apply for our liquor license on Friday and Saturday nights, we will apply for till two AM. But we'll stop serving food at midnight.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want one more thing. On Saturdays and Sundays, I really want to do an early brunch menu, so I believe that we would try to open no later than ten AM for brunch. I don't know of many places up there that are doing brunch, and a little beet was for a while, and there was that diner, but you know, we've got a really good brunch menu, and the weekends for brunch might be really, really great.
Okay, just to keep our focus here, though, we're, right now, we're talking about a public space committee, a public space permit.
I'm sorry.
Al, do you have a very quick question, so we can move this?
Yeah, just very quick. What's the cuisine?
It's gonna be an American bistro. If you've ever, the chef-owner also owns Millie's Surfside. He used to own a restaurant called Dahlia in Spring Valley. There's going to be a raw bar. We're gonna do crudos, pokys. Gonna have great roasted chicken, steak frites.
I'm a vegetarian, so I don't need any of that American bistro cuisine, but that's all right.
There's gonna, there's gonna be, there's gonna be vegetarian options there as well. There's gonna be, right now, there's a goat cheese tart. I will release a menu to the Yang and say that my, the chef said not to release it yet, because he's got changes to make, but I'll be happy to show it to you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Al.
That quick enough there, Peter?
Commissioner Grunewald.
Yeah, I've got another question, please.
Yes.
Any neighbors raised any issues regarding noise or dumpsters or the lateness of the hours?
Are you asking me, Commissioner, or?
I am, yeah.
Nobody as of yet hasn't. I remember when I was putting in the first, the first, what's gonna, was gonna be a deuce out to go. The one concern that a neighbor had that was on North Hampton was if I was gonna put fluorescent lighting back there, and I have no intention of putting fluorescent lighting back there for my sign.
Just again, to remind, those issues will almost certainly come before us when, when the liquor license comes before us. So we can, we can listen to, get more input from immediate neighbors and so on and so forth. Right now, we're focusing on something on Connecticut Avenue and getting him the permission to to sidewalk cafe use.
Why don't you put the motion on the floor?
I move that we support the application by the Hub Restaurant and Sidewalk Cafe and Eamon Banks for a public space permit for a cafe on the sidewalk on the Connecticut Avenue side of the building. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Raise your hand, Commissioners. So the vote is six zero. Commissioner Simmons had to drop off. She'll be back on. Unanimously passed. Six zero zero. And for the record, the only commissioner not voting was Commissioner Simmons, because she had to drop off.
Okay.
For the minutes.
I'll make it. You're adjusting.
I really, I'm really sorry that I got a little late. Thank you very much, everybody. I'm really looking forward to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go to Commissioner Sherman with National Park Service?
Yes, indeed. Good evening, everybody, again. We have put on the agenda for tonight discussion of the plan by the National Park Service that's entitled a Multimodal Safety and Operational Improvements Plan that they have been looking at now and studying for quite some time, and have just on April second opened up a public comment period. They held a briefing on April second for the community, a public scoping meeting where they walked through nearly a hundred slides detailing every last part of the plan. I was on that, and they have put at their website an abundance of information about this, but I thought it was appropriate to bring Superintendent Brian Joyner tonight to speak to us about the plan for a few minutes, and then also to take questions from the community. Welcome, Superintendent Joyner. Thank you very much for being with us.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you very much. I also want to make sure we acknowledge Nick Bartolomeo, the Parks Resource Lands and Planning Program Manager, who is actually gonna probably be a lot more informative about this than myself, but we're excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Fantastic. In fact, I was looking for Nick on the roster of participants. He is with us. Is he? Yes, he is indeed. I see him. There we are. If you don't mind.
Raise their hand.
Yeah, Chief Ranger Bartolomeo, if you don't mind. There you are. You're on the screen now. We can see you. Thank you also for joining us. So what I had mentioned, Commissioners and members of the community, that we would have our National Park Service colleagues do is take five to ten minutes and review this plan. We have, gentlemen, about twenty-five minutes for this segment. So if you could take five or ten minutes and review the plan with some emphasis on the reversible lanes policy, because that's of interest to a lot of people in our community and folks on this call, and then we will open it up to Commissioner and community comments and questions. Does that work for everybody? Okay, fantastic. So over to you, Superintendent Joyner, Chief Ranger Bartolomeo, however you'd like to handle it.
So Nick, I'm going to pass it to you to start this conversation off, and I will chime in as appropriate as that, okay?
That sounds great, Brian. And my apologies, everybody. I've got severe allergies, so I kind of sound a little froggy. My apologies. I will try to make it through this presentation. Okay, so welcome, everyone. I'm glad that you all have the interest to learn a little bit more about the Parkway Project. Let me just give you a little bit of a background. We have been dealing with this since two thousand and twelve, actually. Just after I first started this position, we did. Just after I first started this position, we did a small safety study to look and see what the implications of having park police continue to do this operation while they are, you know, where they're manually getting into the roadways, they're putting up signs, they're putting up barricades and cones to twice a day, ten times a week, change the traffic direction in Rock Creek Park to allow for these one-way operations. And we found that it's, it is a pretty serious safety issue for them. If you have ever traveled the Parkway, I know many of you have, you've seen how park police has to be in the middle of the road and how they have to actually physically maneuver themselves between, between the traffic. So we made a decision to look into this more carefully because if we didn't want to have park police doing these operations, we would have to have had a system like you might see on I sixty six or three ninety five, where we would physically be controlling the traffic with automated gates and overhead lights and signs and everything. And we decided, you know, just a few years ago, that that can't be the way that we go. And the National Park Service, you know, we, we are in our first and foremost, we're in the preservation, the conservation business. And that means that we want to maintain the integrity of our park systems and to have the Parkway have overhead lighting and automated gates and was not in keeping with what it was founded for. And it was founded as a forested respite from the city to provide transport, excuse me, transportation between Rock Creek Park and the downtown Monumental Core. So we began a pretty extensive process engaged with the Federal Highway Administration. And, you know, as we moved through the process, D dot, to look at what our options were for the Parkway. And we decided early on that one of the things we wanted to look at, aside from the very important, very important upgrades that I'll mention in just a minute for the Parkway, we wanted to look at ending reversible lane operations for the safety of park police officers for, you know, the safety of the traveling public and to to make it a much less complicated system for people who are traveling on the Parkway at all times. So that brings us to a few years ago where we started and we engaged with a contractor, AECom, to work through traffic modeling and microanalysis where we look at various intersections in the Parkway and various improvements. And through this analysis, we came up with a series of alternatives and options that hopefully many of you saw the other night when we had that meeting last, last week, I believe it was. And hopefully, we can drop into the chat at some point a link to the website that the Commissioner mentioned earlier that has all this material, including the video from that meeting where it was ninety minutes of really in-depth presentation. So I can't really do it very much justice in this small amount of time. But let me say first, before we go into some of these improvements, that we're also, aside from the reversible lane operation, looking at, you know, a barrier to improve safety between P Street, IQ Street, and the Virginia Avenue enter intersection down by Thompson's Boat Center. We're also looking at widening the multi-use trail, the paved bike trail, as people call it, between T Street and Virginia Avenue. You know, a lot of people use that, and we want to make sure that it's brought up to industry standards. We want to fix the lighting system and we want to put in the proper guardrails, the, you know, the, you know, crash resistant guardrails. A lot of upgrades to make sure that the Parkway is as safe as possible. And we want to, of course, redo the surface. So those are the other aspects besides reversible lane operation. Going back to reversible lane operation, we took a very detailed look at three major intersections. The first is at Shoreham Drive and Beach Drive, where Beach Drive comes down, it meets the Parkway, meets Cathedral Avenue and Shoreham Drive. And there we looked at several options and alternatives, including mostly roundabouts. So where you have these, these, these circular structures, much smaller than like J V J circle, but where traffic could mix at a lower speed to reduce high-impact head-on collisions that can occur at intersections that are, that are configured, like the current one is at Beach Drive. Then we went down and those, and again, when you look online, you will see all of these options in that video and all of the materials, the presentation from that night is there. So you can go right to that and see what the various options for that roundabout are and why we chose, you know, these particular options to help move traffic through there. The other, the other place we looked at was Virginia Avenue and Rock Creek Parkway and that down by Thompson's. And we looked at various lane configurations in the southbound direction so that we would be moving traffic through there in such a way that we wouldn't be backing it up like you, like you see at present today. And finally, we also looked at the major intersection at Ohio Drive and behind the Kennedy Center where the traffic comes from, you know, I sixty six and the Kennedy Center to that intersection. We looked at various types of configurations there to to help, you know, control the traffic flow, including several that really improved pedestrian crossing and also put in a series of traffic lights to help, you know, maintain the traffic there. It's kind of, you know, for those who go through it, it's it's a complicated intersection. So those are the major issues that we looked at regarding reversible operations and safety. But I want to say that in my many years at the National Park Service, I have never seen traffic analysis done quite like this. This is a very thorough, very, you know, very extensive analysis on how we think we can, we believe we can design these intersections in such a way that will keep traffic on the Parkway and that people will not, or very few people are going to peel off and use the residential areas that are adjacent to the Parkway in order to get through. So this traffic analysis is ongoing. As we move through the environmental assessment process, we'll have more information. But in a really nutshell version, that's what we we presented the other night. That's where we're at in the process. We are coming to the public to say, hey, we have these concepts. And we'd like your input on them as we develop in the environmental assessment, which we're doing, a preferred set of alternatives. And I hope that was as thorough as I could be in the time that I had.
That was brilliant, Nick. Thank you very much for that. I want to go to Commissioner Questions first in the community. I have a few of my own, but I'll reserve them if we have time for the end. Commissioners? Any questions? Okay, yeah, Commissioner Finacy, then Commissioner Goslin, then Commissioner Nagy.
Hi, I've worked with this city streetlight advisory panel with the new LED rollout and the lights on Rock Creek Parkway were not part of that. And as a driver, when I drive on Rock Creek Parkway, I find the lights, the LED lights on Rock Creek Parkway way too bright and too blue. They are glaring, they are a distraction, and they're really at a color temperature that is not good for wildlife. I don't think it's appropriate for a park. So have you looked into what the ash tone minimums are? If you can lower the color temperature and get them more warm tone, and can you lower the the lumens and make them less glaring to drivers because they've got a significant glare factor?
Thank you for that. Yes, we will be looking comprehensively at the lighting as part of this project. We recognize that there's a lot of actual poles missing right now from so many of the crashes that have been on Parkway that have taken them out. So looking at the lighting along the Parkway at different types of fixtures, at different types of luminosity and everything is going to be part of this plan.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Goslin.
Yeah, and, and, and I mean, I have no problem with this right now, but the the last time we visited this subject while I was on the ANC was when there was still a plan to put bike lanes on Connecticut Avenue. And even now that the bike lane idea has at least been seriously delayed and probably killed, there's this talk about putting Connecticut Avenue on a vehicle diet. And one of the reasons I have no problem right now is that, given the uncertainty about what downtown will look like, what the federal force, workforce will look like, who knows? Well, I mean, I don't know how you do any planning for for transportation. But if it comes to pass that downtown revives and there is this notion of shrinking the travel lanes on Connecticut Avenue, I mean, are you concerned that you will get a lot of traffic now that over these several years when you've been doing this study on, on Rock Creek Park? And it would it be, is there a lot of expenditure to make this new plan, the plan you are recommending, work, or could this be reversed out if, in fact, we find ourselves with a lot of spillover from a now on a diet Connecticut Avenue? A lot of people looking to for alternative routes?
So I can't, I can't tell you right now that that we would, you know, that would be reversible, but the Commissioner would say, and to everyone here with questions and comments, go to the website that we give you the link to tonight. And please, by all means, put those comments in there and then we will look at all of them and respond accordingly to these what we call the public scoping comments. That issue hadn't been raised before about a potential reversal of what we might decide to do, so we'll look into that for sure. But I wanted to stress to everybody that the numbers that we're using for the Parkway are pre-pandemic. So we are talking about, you know, a reasonable volume, you know, as we, as we saw prior to the pandemic. So those, someone who travels the Parkway on car and then bicycle every day can tell you that, you know, it's, it's, it, this represents the very high use that we saw prior to twenty twenty. So, and we're able to use these numbers to project out to twenty forty-five and beyond what the traffic will look like. So I'm not a traffic engineer, but certainly put your comments in there and we will respond. And to emphasize too, that we are also working, working with D dot on all of this as we're moving through the study. They are reviewing our numbers. They're, they're talking to, our engineers are talking with their engineers. And so we are keeping in contact with them about what might be occurring on the city side.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nagy, then Commissioner, Commissioner Gore, after Commissioner Nagy.
Thank you. So the district under Project Twenty Fifty anticipates adding a hundred and forty-five thousand people, many of whom will be wanting to travel on Rock Creek Parkway. And I wonder if you, I have two questions. I wonder if your, if your projections take that into account. And my second question is, you said lights are not consistent with how the park was initially conceived. And yet we have lights. I know, and Commissioner Finacy pointed out how bright they are. It's true. I remember when they went in. But once you say you won't consider automated barriers because they're not consistent with the zeitgeist of the park, you're kind of left with no alternative but to end either keep reversible lanes as they are or end reversible lanes in, in the name of, and I'm not poo-pooing this at all, the safety of the officers who put out those signs whom I saw every day for thirty-five years. So I used to, I used to drive the Parkway every single day. So first question is, I don't understand the whole thing about lights aren't consistent, but we have them and then but now we can't have automated barriers because they're not consistent? That's my first question. My second question, and my first question was about projections of usage.
Yeah, so I, thank you very much. I was, say on the projections of usage that can you submit that into the Pepsi website and we'll get an answer for you that is, that is correct. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I certainly can give you as much information as possible on how we did the modeling.
Which website, which website do you want me to send it to?
Let's see if we can get the, the, the website address after my, my comments into your chat.
I dropped in, I dropped in the chat for you, Nick.
Yeah, and I'll provide it to everybody as well, so.
Thank you. By the way, I did attend your presentation the other night, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And I misspoke, if, I apologize. And when I meant lights, I meant traffic lights. So think of overhead signals like you see on, you know, Interstate sixty-six like to guide, to guide the traffic lanes when they, when the the shoulder use changes and everything. That's what I meant when I said we look at what it would take to automate a system that does what park police does now without the personnel. And that is indeed gates, that would be overhead signaling, that would be, you know, stuff that is inconsistent with the historic nature of the Parkway with its design. One of the most interesting things I think about the Parkway is that it hasn't changed much since it was built. I mean, in essence, except for some minor modifications, the footprint is today as it was when the Parkway was constructed. And, you know, we, we in the Park Service are in the forever business and we want to maintain that feeling, that, that experience that you have when you're driving on the Parkway, the, you know, the protection of the natural and the cultural resources there. And to do that, we would have to, we have to, you know, look at what we're proposing and see how it comports with, you know, that character. And traffic, overhead lights, gates and everything does not.
Okay, can I just follow up? Because
Absolutely.
It is, why would you not put that out there and let it be commented on in your EA?
It's because, well, because of the reasons I just mentioned, is that there are sometimes there are alternatives, there's concepts that are developed. And we've looked to see whether they meet what's called the purpose and need of a, of a, of a particular project. And, you know, I won't go into that right now because there's not a lot of time. But when you look at what, you know, a traffic management center, lights and gates would, would cause us to have to do to run the Parkway, it doesn't meet the purpose and needs of putting together a project that improves the Parkway, improves travel through it and maintains the cultural and natural resources. So we dismissed that as a concept because it doesn't fit with what we're trying to do. And so, again, if you, you know, feel strongly, please, by all means, put and the the comment into the the website that Brian put into the chat and, you know, we will respond. But that's the basis of our decision.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gore, then we'll go to community questions.
I'm sure. I just, you know, I commuted the Parkway using the reversible lanes for like twenty some years going downtown, so as someone that's done that commute for years, I would hate to see them go away for those selfish purposes. But I'm really curious to know what you guys, in terms of the modeling, has found how this would impact commuters that are going, you know, commuting both to and from work using the Parkway? And in particular, where would this overflow traffic go to? Is there going to be a lot of overflow traffic? Can you talk a little bit about that? And then just to recap what Commissioner Goslin says, I think there has to be some type of plan to maybe revisit this decision. A lot of things are up in flux, including federal workers being mandated to go back to the workforce. We don't know what that's going to look like. We don't, you know, everything is so chaotic right now. And I know with the change to Beach Drive, communities that surround Beach Drive, including mine in Hawthorne and others along, you know, the wart for corridor, there's a lot of people that felt a lot of change in terms of the traffic flow that would love to revisit that decision. And we've tried to have that done with MPS to no avail. So I would definitely, you know, repeat and echo what Commissioner Goslin said in terms of there, there needs to be a mechanism to revisit this decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. And and again, please, by all means, as I said to everyone, put your comments into the website. Also, on traffic flow, so our, our goal in all of this is to design these intersections to allow for the flow that will minimize, minimize, bring as low as possible the amount of traffic that we need to divert to the Parkway. And when you look and divert from the Parkway into the neighborhood, first you have people who are doing, you know, going through the city right now because they have to avoid, you know, a one-way Parkway. They can't get to where they're going using the Parkway, so they divert into the neighborhoods to say head north in the morning rush hour. That will change. They'll have the option then to use the Parkway and will do so. And then through these intersection designs, and if you look especially at Virginia Avenue, where, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is is five lanes where you actually are heading south so that you can properly control traffic and move it through that intersection in such a way that will be very similar that will be very similar to what you see today during the morning rush hour in terms of getting cars through. So our goal in all of this, um, our major analysis, our microanalysis of these various intersections is to minimize traffic impacts to the neighborhood. So um, again, we have traffic engineers who can explain this much better than me. Um, so if there's there's a need for that at some point, dot by all means, let let Superintendent join or know and we'll take it from there. Okay.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Joyner, you have your hand up. Did you want to respond to any of the questions?
Yeah, really quickly, um, uh, it's someone who also grew up in this area and learned how to drive on Rock Creek Parkway. Um, my initial reaction was, what do you mean you're getting rid of reversible lanes? That's a rite of passage for people. But um, then we started talking with the traffic engineers about the number of accidents that happen because of reversible lanes. Because people who are not familiar with the Parkway find themselves going the wrong way and the number of um accidents and fatalities that take place. Safety is a very critical component in all of this as well. I understand there's a level of comfort involved with the way it currently runs, but there is a safety issue to be considered. And uh, to the point that Nick made, um, traffic is already having to find other ways to get up either uptown in the morning and or downtown in the afternoon because of reversible lanes. And that traffic is already moving through neighborhoods. I don't think that the there's going to be an increase of traffic as much as there's going to be a concentration of traffic on the Parkway that can be moved a little that can be moved better than it is currently. And we should consider the idea that the Parkway accommodating with twenty forty and fifty thousand cars right now. Um, we recognize that that's going to be an increase um as we move towards twenty forty five. But the planning that we're doing is based on the idea that we're already seeing a high influx of cars in and on the Parkway. And how do we manage that moving forward in the future while keeping it as a Parkway and not in a highway or things like that that people want to call it? And I think the signaling and all those other things might actually lead to the idea that maybe this is much more of an open road way as opposed to a scenic Parkway. And I'm over time. All right.
Yeah, so we're we're over time also, I think, nearly for this segment, so I just want to quickly go to community questions. To Cal and then Lee and then as we have time, Commissioner Finacy. Cal, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just want to say that first of all, I've been on that Parkway for sixty three years. Um, but I I uh, the link that Brian, the link that you put in the chat um talks about making comments on the on the uh public scoping document, but not the reversible lanes document. So it doesn't really indicate how to comment on the reversible lanes uh issue.
Uh, I would say that the public um that the reversible lanes issue is part of the public scoping document is holistic. So you make your comments in there and your comments about the reversible lanes will be factored in to that whole document.
So you click on the left side where it's open for comment and there's a one next to it. Is that the place we're supposed to do it? Because it's not a very user friendly website, frankly.
Yeah, just follow all the instructions that that we put on that first page and you get to it. It literally, I I put them step by step so everybody could follow them because.
Okay, I must be missing something because I don't see a set of step by step instructions, but I'll look further. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Cal. Lee, mayor.
Safe Connecticut Avenue. Um, one of my big concerns is that uh first in your presentation, you said uh you expected diversion rate of plus or minus three percent. Um, and yet you're using data from twenty nineteen before the reversible lanes were removed from safe from Connecticut Avenue. And also you're not, at the time, there was no mandate to return to the office. Um, I'm wondering if you're going to commit to revisiting all of your traffic counts because all of them don't really reflect what's going on now. I think more people are in cars. Uh, post pandemic, more people are driving in general, and that's my first question.
Yeah, uh, Lee, yeah, I would definitely say please put that because uh, again, Brian and I are not traffic engineers, but we do have a really good, very experienced team working on this and we'll we'll get an answer for you. So please put that specific question into the website and and we'll get back. Okay.
So you project, uh, so that three percent is that three percent of your projected fifty thousand cars or fifteen hundred extra cars a day diverting off of Rock Creek Parkway?
Yeah, Lee, again, I I'm sorry, I can't answer the the real specifics of the the nuances. Brian and I, we're not traffic engineers. We just, we don't have that experience. But I know that we have taken so much into account in this modeling and our microanalysis that's ongoing here and our coordination with D dot. Using the best numbers and the best information that we can possibly have, but I definitely ask you to please put your comment in there so the engineers can answer that.
To responses to every question that we put in the uh in the
I'm sorry.
Will will you be responding to every question raised?
So what what happens in public scoping, unlike when we release an environmental assessment and and a document is done of every single, nearly every single, what we call a substantive comment. We'll group those those questions because I'm certain that we'll get several that are just like yours. We'll put them together and then we'll do a a response as here's here's our answer to this. Um, and again, as as I've offered earlier, if there's a need um to have more clarity on this, we have the people who are available to to go through the numbers and talk more about the technical ends of things with the community. So we we stand ready to to answer any questions you have.
Great.
Okay, a softball question for you. Um, a lot of the accidents that I've seen occur on the northbound P Street ramp as people are getting on. A lot of accidents, usually uh rear end, one car rear end another, yet you didn't mention that at all in your presentation. I was wondering are they going to be looking at that because I suspect a lot of your accidents are one fender benders and two, a lot of them on P Street.
Um, that section of the Parkway is the most accident uh has the highest accident rate right around P Street and the curve going south from there. So yes, um, you know, I'm sorry I didn't mention in my in my nickel version presentation, but that is one of the reasons why we're looking so carefully at a center line dividing a median of sorts there to, you know, to separate traffic going northbound and southbound. We're also looking at the speed limits.
I think you misunderstood. That I think I'm talking about the ramp to get up, just the ramp to get onto P Street, onto the Parkway from P Street. Just the ramp.
Yeah, I I can't tell you the specific information about that specific ramp. I can just tell you that we know that we have a higher incident of traffic of accidents and fatalities in that section there. So again, uh, Lee, if you can put that question in, we'll try to get more information for you.
Are you good fair with us in the chat, your email address, please?
Um, actually, if you can do what everybody else is doing and put it into the Pepsi website, I'm happy to give my 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 uh my email. But the way that we respond to these questions is through the use of that website that Brian put in there. That way, everybody submits things the same, everybody gets the same answer.
Great. Good. Thanks very much. And we will wrap up with Commissioner Finacy.
Hi, yeah, I have a cost question. Looking through the materials, it looks like the annual cost to have the police officers stage, you know, the change of lanes is about six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And I was wondering if you had cost estimates for what this proposed construction would cost? Because if it's like an eighty million dollar project, that's paying back in a hundred, you know, that's a hundred years worth of police time. Um, and also, how much the traffic study cost?
Um, I don't have the numbers on the what we call the the Volpe study, the traffic impact analysis, the transportation impact analysis. We can get that um. That was done in partnership with the with the Federal Highway Administration and I don't, I I'm not sure exactly what that costs, but let us let's get that information for you. Um, and uh, do we have an analysis now? No, we won't have, you know, a a a class C or class B estimate, we call it, until we get through the environmental assessment. Right now, we're working at, you know, to develop fifteen percent design and that fifteen percent design informs what options we choose. But we are not going to have at this level of design a cost analysis for uh for this um for this project.
So you don't really know how many years it's going to take you to pay back this construction then before you choose your option?
It's not a matter of paying back construction. It's a matter of, you know, making, using the federal money that's available to make the roadway safe, to improve passage. It's it's not a, it's not a payback analysis. So um, we will know more as we move through the process, but right now we simply don't have those numbers. I I don't have that information.
Commissioner Nagy, I think we've got to, unless you have a burning question, we've got to wrap up this segment and move on to our next.
Super quick question. Okay, sorry, but um to Nick, um, can you think of a comparable project and what that might have cost?
No, this is pretty unique. I mean, you know, you can't even look at like northbound GW Parkway, which is under construction now and make that comparable. There's no comparison.
This is more complicated than GW Parkway?
No, but it's a different, that's a different and much wide, larger scale construction project that's going on right now. So I can't.
So how much did, how much does the GW Parkway project cost? Maybe we can extrapolate.
Sorry, it's not my my lane. I remember looking at some of these original uh when it was when it was a proposed project and saying, you know, oh, that's that's what that costs. It's it's significant, but I can't tell you what it is. I just don't know. But
Thank you.
A beach drive for comparison was, I think, thirty two or thirty three million dollars to be the entire.
Okay.
That might be.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, listen, we thank you very much for coming tonight and and sharing uh details of the plan, taking our community questions. Uh, I know folks will across our ANC, go to the website, enter their comments. It's open until May second. We're encouraging them to do that. I actually have a separate survey that I'm running for the constituents in my single member district. I've already gotten a number of responses um uh and their views on the reversible lanes issue specifically, which I will share with you. Uh, and also I want to let members of the community know, commissioners know. I have written to D dot Director Sharon Kirschbaum to ask, and I appreciate Nick, your comments about D dot working closely with you. Um, we have written, I have written to her to ask for any input they have that would be important for us to consider in our ANC, and she indicated that they would be sharing with us observations about about the reversible lanes matter in in particular. So we look forward to getting that and sharing that with with the community. But thank you again, Superintendent Joyner. Nick, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time.
Thanks very much. Take care, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioners, we'll move on to our next topic. Um, if you look at the agenda, we have um. Let me put time back on. We have a a bunch of items under um the civic core discussion. Um, there's been a lot that's happened in the commission since then as well as um with the disposition meeting. Um, so we had some very broad categories. Uh, obviously, follow up to the disposition meeting if there is any questions. Um, summarization process for those presentations that were um had. Um, Commissioner Goslin and myself um can update the commission and the community on follow up engagement with the um development teams as well as the community center and library staff. We need to talk about the survey, um, the last survey meeting that was held. Uh, we need to talk about Survey Monkey. Uh, there's a lot on the table. We only have thirty five minutes. Um, so I think one of the things we really need to kind of get at the top of the discussion is a survey um and go over if we're still planning to do this as an ANC, um. Um, how we're going to do it. Uh, maybe Commissioner Simmons and Goslin, you can give an update of the last survey meeting. Um, Commissioner Sherman, you put out a survey today I just saw earlier today, so maybe you want to talk about your survey. Um, and just see how we're going to coordinate this.
Uh, Corinne, too, you want to start or you want me to start?
Um. You can start.
Okay, uh, I uh let the cards on the table, uh, the survey working group meetings have been a little rocky. I thought we made some good progress at the April, the third, the April first meeting. Um, modifying somewhat uh the demographic questions uh and um talking about uh um where we go from there. Um, I have sent to all of you um an attempt to work through, I I think there was a general agreement on April first about the, at least the idea of my two stage, my two part questionnaire, once we get beyond the demographics. Some fundamental questions at the top and then a way to um look at and compare along the lines of the major issue categories that Bruce offered, um, the various proposals. I have tried to produce essentially everything that would go under the uh a version of everything that would go under the demographic questions. And um I hope, given the tight timeframe, um, I hope you would look at uh that it's attempts to be a a a a framework that takes into account the various things that we've talked about in the three meetings and and um and that Bruce has talked about uh in terms of these categories. Um, um, I think that we ought to do a survey. I think we ought to do it together as an ANC. Um, if there is, I mean, I get, I get the impression there's not as much appetite for it, which I I I find baffling. Um, but um, in any case, if we're going to do it, we need to turn around um a document quickly. Um, I will talk in a little while about Survey Monkey. Um, but uh, I mean, I think the alternative uh is that we'll do survey, we need to do surveys ourselves, and I think that's among other things, um, at our very first meeting, Bruce, you talked about, um, you know, um, essentially survey exhaustion. Um, I'm actually a little surprised that you put out a survey, given that you discouraged the idea of our doing one together with some very simple questions at our March twenty seventh meeting, again, talking about wearing people out uh and having them confused about who, you know, which questions, which who which survey should they answer? But in any case, I mean, I hope my, I would endorse doing it together. Um, I think I've offered something that offers a framework. I think we need to look at it. The working group needs to look at it quickly and we need to circulate it among some more, get more comments from you guys. And um and 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 get it in some sort of form that we test. Corinne, over to you.
Corinne, why don't you just give an update of what was discussed at the last survey meeting?
Um, I I can recall, that's been a a week, it feels like. Um, but I believe what happened at the last survey was that we were just going to go through with the demographics and then um, going with Peter mentioned earlier about um what they're interested, what residents are interested in seeing and then fleshing out um what they didn't like and did like from the the specific proposals. Um, so I think that's what happened at the last meeting. Um, co chairs Sherman did not attend. He held his own single member district. Um. Engagement session on that, so um. Okay, one second. Um, so that's that's all I have to add. Um, initially, I think when we started talking about the survey, I suggested that we just did a quick survey about, you know, what people liked and don't like, and I think Commissioner Sherman has sent something out similar for that today. So I'm just really interested in seeing how we can move forward. And if we're going to do a survey community wise.
So let me just uh mention what what I have done and 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 the work that I've done since the last survey committee meeting. Um, what I've put out to my community today is not a survey. It's simply allowing people to send me their impressions of the proposals. So I have people already sending me, as I'm sure you do, their impressions. They're sending their thoughts. They're giving their opinions. Um, I'm just presenting a structured way for people to do that. We did that on the community Zoom that I held last week. There were forty four people on that call. Uh, I had three architects who were helping our community members sort through the proposals, look at fine points, analyze them. Um, I thought it was a very productive session. And it was productive also towards the effort to clarify the questions that organically come up when people consider these proposals. So I So I was using not only that session as a listening session for me to hear people's views, but also a session to help refine questions that we would want to ask on a survey. Um I appreciate Commissioner Goslin, all the work that you've done and what you sent around today. Um so I think in our next survey working group, we can take that up and uh and go into depth and detail on that. Um, the one issue that I have raised with the commissioners is how we describe to the community are how we intend to use the results. And that's the part that I think we could talk about tonight, um beyond getting into individual questions about the survey questions, because I'm not sure that we'd be able to make a lot of progress on that. That's the work of the working group. But in terms of how we intend to use the results, um that's something that I think we all, as a commission, want to be clear on. Very important to do that when you're issuing a survey to people, so they understand what you're gonna do with the results once you, once you get them.
So let me go back to the survey meeting before we get into that, and and I disagree. I don't think that's where we need to spend our time. Um, in terms of the next meeting, when is the survey committee going to meet again?
We have not scheduled.
Okay, can we schedule one now? Uh and reason being, one of the things that we really need to talk about uh is the sixty-day comment period and how that is going to impact the commission. So uh I know, Bruce, you spoke with Jills. I spoke with Jills about the sixty-day comment period. He spoke to me again about it um at the disposition meeting. And we really need to, as a commission, talk about that because that is going to impact the timeline for everything we do. Now, Jill's basically reiterated what you said, Bruce. We do not have to, as a commission, respond within a sixty-day timeframe. But if we do not, as a commission, we will not have public comments for the disposition meeting on the record. Jill's said that if we sent in a resolution after the sixty-day period, obviously, they're gonna look at it and give it great weight. If we didn't send in a resolution, even up until the point that the council is getting ready to take their vote. So once the council set a hearing date, say we send a resolution right up until that hearing date, they will still look at that resolution. They will still give it great weight. The council will still consider it. The big um difference is the ANC comments as part of the public record for the disposition hearing. I have never known the ANC or any ANC, for that matter, to miss public comments for the disposition, for a disposition hearing. So it was the same that we did for the surplus hearing. Um, and every hearing where public comments are submitted, um the ANC has always met that deadline. So I think we need to really discuss how we're gonna proceed with that sixty-day period and that that comment period, because we only have a few meetings prior to that, where we would have to come up with the resolution um and submit the resolution to DEMPED, so it will be considered on the record. Um, and if the ANC does not want to do that, uh then individual commissioners are free to do that. Um but I think there's really uh a discussion that we need to have tonight about that, above everything else, because that is the most important thing. Um, I, you know, I definitely think there's gonna be a lot of community members that would expect to have us to have comments on the record. Um and that would move up the survey. Um, because to me, to have some of that public comment on the record, we would need to have some survey results. So um I don't know how quickly we can get this done, um what other commissioners are thinking about. Um, we have about twenty, twenty-three minutes left in this discussion. Um, where you want to start, you know, talking from this point.
So can I suggest just taking care of, right off, a few practical things? Um, we're, I think, assuming we're doing a ANC-wide survey and assuming we're doing it within the timeframe uh of uh with the deadline being May twenty-eighth. Um, I I think we ought to meet as soon, the working group ought to meet as soon as possible. I am busy on Wednesday night and um Friday night, can meet tomorrow night and Thursday night. Um, what about you, Bruce? What about you, Corinthia?
Yeah, I'm I'm good.
Corinthia, what's your schedule like?
Um, Wednesday.
Yeah, do Wednesday. I gotta.
You said you can't, right?
Yeah, I can't do Friday. I can do tomorrow and I can do Thursday, and I can do weekend. Weekend.
Um, I could do Thursday.
What, you what?
I could do Thursday.
Yeah.
Second, again, Lisa, let's just see to get these out of the way um uh so that we've got a clear shot for a a a broader discussion. On Survey Monkey, our our current now suspended or now not up-to-date um Survey Monkey uh subscription is for a team premier. Um, I suggest that we do not renew that because it costs thirty-three hundred dollars to renew. Um whereas getting a um annual premier, an individual account in the name of the ANC, costs about half that, sixteen hundred eighty, sixty-some-odd dollars. Um, uh I, I have, I want to be sure that if we go that route, we don't, they don't in any way erase the data on the the previous account, the account we did the twenty-twenty-three um uh survey on. But I do think that we ought to just switch to a cheaper program, because you'll remember that we've already invested two thousand dollars in Go Vocal, and we seem to sideline that right now, and I'm fine with that, but let's understand that this is the, we ought to take a, an inexpensive. And I've said to Bruce, and I've shown Bruce this, it has um, it has all the thing, it has all the cross-tab issues and randomization issues that uh that um we can do that sort of stuff to a fair deal. So um um uh do I, I'd like approval to um to uh you know, sign something or to 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 call Survey Monkey and say we're gonna subscribe and approval for Corinthia to receive and pay that bill. Is that something we could uh, we could deal with right now?
Do you have an amount? Do we have it in amount?
Yeah, he said it. It's like sixteen hundred bucks, right?
Eighteen hundred sixty-eight dollars plus taxes, so.
Yeah, I mean, you can make the, just go on and make the motion, Peter, and put the amount that you know, you know, say.
So I move, I move that the ANC approve um the subscription, uh a subscription to Survey Monkey annual premier in the name of um uh the whole ANC, so at threeG at ANC dot DC dot gov with um with login available to all of the commissioners. Uh uh approve a a year-long subscription, the shortest we can get, for seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars of plus taxes. Um, do I have a second?
Good question. Point of clarification. Are we clear that the data from the previous survey will remain?
We will, we've got to be clear about that. Um, so I've I've been, I've been trying to talk to the tech people. Um, it's it's remained to date.
Hang on, hang on for a minute. So there's a second. This is actually part of the discussion. So I second your motion and continue with the discussion.
So I mean, I'm answering, I'm answering Liz.
Yeah, continue, continue with your discussion.
Yes, it will remain, and I will make sure of that um before any subscription goes live. Um it's a, it it'll be a new subscription, and so the the old one will retain the status it retains it has now. But I am checking with our tech people, just to be sure they don't get carried away with themselves or something.
So we do, do we need to go ahead and approve this, so we can move on to another discussion item?
There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion on the um Survey Monkey motion, commissioners? Okay, so commissioners, all those, and Commissioner Finacy, you're off camera. Um, are you able to come on?
Yes, sorry, I wanted to eat a bite of food and I didn't want to.
No problem. I just want, if if you, if you have to go off, just let me know and I'll do a voice vo- voice vote. Um, so commissioners, all those in favor of um the motion for Survey Monkey, raise your hand. Okay, that's seven zero, unanimous, okay? Okay, um Commissioner Sherman.
Yeah, so a a question. Um, we have um in our possession, a wealth of of data uh about neighbor preferences regarding the civic core. So as we um proceed in the survey working group, um I would want us, and I just want to put this out for other commissioners, if they have an opinion about this, or even members of the public, um that we can take a look at what we already know, what we've heard over and over again, in fact, in many respects from the community, so that a new survey, unless there's urgency in asking the same question again, um add to, as opposed to simply duplicate what we've already asked about. Um, I'm not saying we have to talk about it tonight. I just put it out there for the working group to consider. Yes, Commissioner Goslin.
So I mean, I I have tried to structure the questions that I'm suggesting um either to build off of, to give us more uh nuance and more uh depth to questions, to a few highlight, high-level questions that we asked in twenty-twenty-three. So though we ask, are you for housing at the site or not for housing or, you know, we we bear down on that in a way that we did not in twenty-twenty-three. And then with regard to the preferences for the, for the uh the various elements, it seems to me that um we 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 tie a, we, we are, we are not asking current questions if we don't ask questions about the community center, about the library, about housing, about parking, about green space, about retail, with the eight proposals in mind. I mean, for now, for for the first time in this debate, we're 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 not asking questions either in the abstract or sort of saying, would you like to keep what we have at the community center? We see these new proposals. I mean, many people may answer those questions as saying, we want to keep just what we have now, and that's fine. I mean, they have, the 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 questions are structured in a way that they could do that. But I do think that to all, we don't want to fall out that the the fourteen item lists that we had in twenty-twenty-three about the preferences for the particular institutions, because we have that information and we have this, this new way of thinking about it, like asking about the uh the proposal, the eight proposals. So that's how I respond.
I'm just, I would just mention that I've, I've, I've gone back and read all of the prior surveys over the last week. I looked at all the questions, looked at the proposals, uh the, the eight design schemes in light of those. And um there's a lot of assessment that this commission could do of those eight proposals to give feedback to DEMPED with what we have in in hand. We just start with the very basic thing, that on the twenty-twenty-three survey, when we asked the respondents to prioritize the five major elements, which we've been talking about in the working group, and they assigned the number-one position to the library, next was the community center, next was green space with recreational facilities, next was housing, affordable housing, and the next was parking. Um, and DEMPED, taking that information, crafted an RFP in which, for DEMPED's reasons, and I understand what they are, it's city policy and their aim of of expanding affordable housing, asked for maximum density at the site. And as a consequence of that, we have a lot of proposals that are tilted, of course, because of that RFP, towards housing, affordable housing, and de-emphasizing in comparison, in terms of the overall weight, the community center and library, even though those were the priorities that our community assigned in twenty-twenty-three. So that's an example, broad strokes of taking a look at the data.
Let me go to Corinthia. Commissioner Simmons has her hand up.
Are you okay? Um, I, the only comment I have is, when we talk about the previous survey, when I look at the survey for my two-thousand-member, single-member district, there are only about three hundred respondents for a single-member district oh five. So I would, I would not want to take the prior survey and kind of utilize that as binding, because during my campaign and even now and talking with residents in single-member district five, they are in support of housing at the site. So I'm a little hesitant to take that when it's not really re- fully representative of single-member district five. I know it may be for a single-member district two, but that's just, I'm not sure. I want to say we asked this in the first survey, and this is what the, what the community says. And I think, given that we've seen elements of presentations and what the site can look like, I think some people's opinion may change, may have changed. Those who have been fully supportive of it and those who may have been fully opposed to various elements.
Commissioner Goslin?
Uh, two things sort of headed in opposite directions. First, the other practical thing I think we ought to do, discussion goes on too long, is pick a day, at least one day, for a special meeting. Because I just, I think it's really important that we talk, as a whole ANC, together to the community and hear from them, so.
We're gonna have to probably have, I mean, because we have, I just put something in a chat, we're gonna have to have a special meeting. There's no way that we're gonna get this done without one or two special meetings, so I would just ask the commission to be mindful of that and to be flexible. Um, one of the things that we have previously done in discussions like this is is to kind of do it um, you know, council-style, where people come in and testify, and we just take testimony. We just listen to the different opinions throughout the the community without, you know, even really giving feedback, but just hearing what people have to say. We're gonna have to have a special meeting on the resolution. The community is gonna wanna, you know, really weigh in, regardless of what we say. We know this is a divided community, and they're gonna have a lot of input on that resolution. So we're gonna have to have a couple of special meetings. Um, we cannot do this through a regular session, a regular meeting, so just keep that in mind. I I I wholeheartedly agree, Peter. Um, Laura just put in the chat kind of a rollback schedule, so, you know, we might want to look at that and start thinking about, you know, when the survey is gonna go out, we need to get some hard and fast dates. Um, and we want, I'm, I'm assuming the community to have at least thirty-day input, you know, I'm not sure what the um industry timeline is, but I would think, you know, at least fifteen to thirty-day input, and we talked about getting mailers out, so we got a lot of work to do um within this short timeframe.
So I would love to name at least one date. How about the twenty-fourth of April?
Well, the twenty-fourth of April, we have reserved for that for um the cit- the uh library and community center folks. So that would be a special meeting. So just since you brought that up, we've been working um behind the scenes to get the directors of the library and the community center to hold a special meeting to discuss, to include DEMPED, to ins- to discuss the RFP relating to those two institutions. Um, and I would think that would need to be in and of itself its own special meeting. Looks like right now, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and there was one other date that they proposed, and the twenty-fourth seems like it might be the best date. Um, so for commissioners, just to hold that date, but that's just for library, community center, relating to the RFP.
And could I just reclaim my time just to say back to Bruce? I I I'm a little confused. We, we, we are in a, we're in a world with eight proposals. I am not trying to avoid the central questions that were asked back in twenty-twenty-three and that I think we can ask and ask in a way that gives us more, a greater depth of understanding. But to say we already have a lot is to act as if we don't have the eight proposals in front of us. I mean, let's go with what we, what we've got in front of us. I mean, I I think these two, I hope you've had time to look at what I sent around. Um, and I think these two marry well. I think there's always room for improvement, and you and uh have perhaps had more experience with surveys, but I have to say, it was a learning experience, the months and months and months uh that went into the twenty-twenty-three survey. I have to say, it was a learning experience, the months and months and months of that went into the 2023 survey. So I mean, I do think, I'm not sure, I mean, one way you could read your comments is you 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 don't want to hear again from the community that you, we we got the 2023 survey and we should just go with that. I I may be misinterpreting you, but is that, is that what you're saying?
No, it's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we've asked the community, they've weighed in on their preferences, and the the very simple question is this. Does the public feel that it got what it wanted out of the proposals? These are basic questions, right? People are looking at the proposals and they have in mind what they thought they were gonna get. Well, did they get that or not? I'm not saying that is our survey question. I I'm saying that's what I'm hearing from people as I'm talking to folks, and it's informing how I'm thinking about going about the survey. But one thing that I do want to stress for all of us here with members of the public on the call, and that is that it is really important for all of us to be clear on what we get out of a survey, how representative any survey that we're going to do is going to be, what a realistic sense of the response rate is going to be. And then at the end of the day, as I asked earlier, what are we prepared to do with the results when we get them? Because the last thing we want to do as a commission is go out and ask people for their views and on certain issues, certain topics, if not the entire survey, for whatever reasons, and they can be totally legitimate in terms of different commissioners' understanding about how they uh discharge their duties, we decide not to honor the results of a given question, the very first question you have on the survey right now, Peter, for example. So if we're gonna put that question on, we as a commission have to have some reasonable consensus about what we're gonna do with the results when we get them. Otherwise, it can be very disillusioning for the community. Further disillusioning, I would have to say, because the 2023 experience.
Well, I've made clear that I'm gonna take whatever results are very seriously, and I hardly think that any of the rest of this commission is gonna do anything less. Um, what I have also said is that I do, I will not commit to blindly following uh the survey results. Now, there may be a variety of opinions about that, and we can have a a political theory discussion about that, but as Lisa has said, we, if we're gonna do anything, we gotta go do it. And um, and having, and talking political theory is not gonna get us there.
But Commissioner Goslin, I'm not talking political theory. I'm talking down and dirty nuts and bolts, my friend. You ask somebody a question, do you support housing at the commu- at the civic core? If they, if a majority says no, then what are you gonna do? It's not political theory.
Okay, so I think we can discuss that when we get there. Uh, we, I do not want, we got five minutes left in this discussion. That is a discussion between individual commissioners, group commissioners, and I truly believe that is a discussion with commissioners and their constituents. And as I've said before, if people don't like the way a commissioner votes, they will vote uh accordingly. And we just came out of an election, so we kind of see how that has gone. But more importantly, we gotta get the survey team working, we gotta get a survey, and we gotta get responses before we can report on anything and vote on anything or put anything in a resolution. And we are a long way away from that. So um, in the time that we have remaining, um, if the survey committee could get together, and just to go back to your question, Peter and Bruce, I I really do think we can do both. I think we do have to go back into some of the um results from the previous survey, incorporate that maybe into the survey. I don't know how to do that. Um, but I do think there is information there that we can incorporate into um the new survey. So um Commissioner Nagy has her hand raised, and we also have a community member has their hand raised. We gotta get into this discussion of ANC mailers, and maybe we need to take a vote, at least a generic vote on that, so Commissioner Nagy can get to work in um getting the mailer situated. And um, I think everything else, we we pretty much have touched. Commissioner Nagy, you want to go into your, your.
I can, I can combine the two things that I need to talk about. One is, I want to say to the last point, I I have issues about doing a survey if we're not going to honor the results of the survey. It seems, um, to say the least, a little pointless. However, I have done some research on how much it would cost to send out mailers, and thank you uh to Commissioner Goran, to Commissioner Simmons, because they sent out mailers and that helped um inform my research. Uh, when I sent out a mailer during the campaign uh way back when, it cost me seventy five cents a postcard, including postage. Uh, prices apparently have gone up since then.
Yeah.
Because it costs a dollar, between a dollar seven and a dollar nine to send out the mailers that you guys um sent out. It, I did look at um direct mail, um every door direct mail. Um, and that is cheaper, perhaps. It's it's way more labor intensive, because you have to label everything and take it. But even even then, even if you get past all of that, um, one of the issues is that our ANC doesn't fall squarely within the EDDM
Right.
zones. So you end up sending the survey to people who aren't in the EDDM, and I I highly recommend that we do not uh do that. So there are, you know, several companies. There's Postcard Mania, which you guys used. I used Terindel, um, and I think we probably should revisit that, because it was a little cheaper. Let's see if they still are. Um, I did actually get with them, and it looked like it was about the same price. So I thought maybe we could look at that. The the deal with them is they have certain timeframes that they send things out, and you gotta make that timeframe or else you're behind the eight ball. So if other, if if other companies are more flexible about when they can do the printing um and sending out, then we probably would want to go with that. So I'd say at the outside, we're looking at a dollar nine-ish a postcard. Um, and we're looking at thirteen thousand-ish postcards, so thirteen thousand dollars.
That's about comparable to where we were last year. And I would just say, um, you know, we can go with whoever we want to go with. Postcard Mania is extremely flexible and they're kind of familiar with us, because we've used them now twice, different commissioners. Um, but they're hugely flexible and everything is online, like all the submissions, uploading the um mailing list and and.
Yeah, that was.
Terms. It's really, really good.
That was, that was true with Terindel, and Terindel is a subcontractor to FedEx, so.
Okay.
They also do that. So the only question there would be, can they do it in our timeframe?
Right, okay. Let me go with Commissioner Grunwald. She had her hand up, and then Commissioner Goslin.
Yep, uh, we've got a uh a question on the chat which says, will the proposed survey allow people to say that they don't want, that they still don't want housing added to the civic core? Putting housing on the site is not a done deal, and people who oppose housing on the site have a right to express their views. So I'm gonna ask uh the committee, because I've I've kind of been disinvited from the committee. I was told by uh Peter Goslin in an email that um I I shouldn't participate when I protested. Um, he said I could attend but not speak. So uh I can't speak to the answer of this question, so I'm gonna ask um Corinthea Simmons and Peter Goslin to answer that question for Michelle Wallen and Mary Callahan and Andrea Rosen and Jane Rondell. Thank you.
Bruce Sherman is a, Bruce Sherman is also a co-chair of the committee.
Well, hang on, let's just go with Commissioner Goslin to answer the question.
Um, first, um, I just to finish that arc, and you did attend and you did talk. Um, so um.
No, 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 gotta correct that. That's Peter, Peter, I absolutely have to correct that.
Okay.
You and Corinthea talked over us every time we tried to talk. So don't try to paint this as, you know, sweetness and light, because it was not.
Not sweetness and light, that's true. So look, the answer to Carol is this. Yes, I have tried, as the material I sent you um tries to answer as directly as possible, it tries to ask as directly as possible the high level questions, the questions, yes or no, I don't want any change, et cetera, because I'm concerned that once we get down to the eight proposals, you're you're basically, you do not want to leave people bracketed in that. It doesn't allow people like Michelle, like Andrea Rosen, like many people in this community to just say no. And so, yes, it does answer this. To you, Liz, I want to ask the question, but you said ten thousand-ish. I mean, one of the things I realized that uh, I mean, we're not sending to every um, I hope we're not sending to every uh registered voter. We're sending to every household, right?
I would have assumed that we would send to every registered voter.
Well, we can save money there. So for example, um.
But we, this is a representative process. It's, I'm
We get into the.
I'm stunned to know that we wouldn't send it to every registered voter. When I was sending out postcards, I sent it to every registered voter in my S and D. I would, I would expect that we would do that again. They all have voice. They all should have a voice.
In the same household, and they receive mail that they both look at, or they all three look at it. They, you know.
How do we know that?
Well, you guys can, you guys can work that out in committee. Um.
Okay.
I think that's a good question, um, because you can do it, and they can do it either way. But I think that's something a committee.
Happy to look at that. I'm happy to look at that in committee, which, by the way, Peter, please remember to invite me.
And, you know, just to go back to the question that was asked, um, I looked at Commissioner Goslin's format or his proposal today. I think the housing, do you want it on the site, and iterations of that is like the first question. Um, I have not attended all the survey working group meetings, but I did attend the last one, and we spent a good deal of time on that question, so I don't want anyone in the community to think that the working group has um missed that or left that off. It's on there, and it's been on there. Um, let me go to Commissioner Sherman, um, and then we need to wrap this up. We're over and go to um Cheryl Barnes.
Uh, two, two quick things. First of all, I, you know, just speaking for myself, but to my colleagues on the commission, I I hope that we all do everything we can to facilitate everybody's participation in commission activities, no matter what they are. If it's a, obviously, a meeting like this, regular meeting, special meeting, task force meeting, committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, working group meeting, if commissioners want to participate, they should be able to participate without any type of uh inhibition uh uh or uh impediment. Um, something that's been on my mind as I've listened to architects who read these plans, I've learned an enormous amount from Matt Hamblin, from Chris Landis, from Terry Rosenhaff, from Claudia Russell, and I would recommend that we as a commission uh engage uh architects in our community who are not part of any uh advocacy group, but are simply um architects um to help us look at these proposals and understand elements that frankly, when I look at them, I can't see. So that's one uh constituency. I also think as another constituency, we need to be reaching out to apartment building owners uh on Connecticut Avenue to understand how the impact of additional housing surplus will affect the supply-demand equation going forward on Connecticut Avenue. Uh, if I were an apartment building owner competing for the same um universe of of potential renters, um, I would be interested and want to know what uh what was happening, have a voice in that. You'd mentioned the meeting with DPR and DCPL. That is to get their criteria for the library and community center to understand, is, are are we thinking about, and I ask this question because I don't know, it occurs to me that might be a good idea to try to get, if they would provide their own assessment of what the bids have, the the submitted bids, what the proposals have? Are they prepared to do any of that, or?
Uh, I think I was telling Commissioner uh Goslin that it's very tight, because what they cannot say anything to jeopardize the RFP, so it right now, it's geared towards their requirements in light of the RFP and in alignment with the RFP.
Okay. Then other constituencies quickly are business owners, which these, these are, these are not my districts. They're Commissioners Simmons and Goslin's district and the business owners, but I know they have interests that transcend what we would no, ask on a survey. And then I hear from people who are nearby. Um, one or two were, happened to be on the call that I had a week ago about whether or not we as a commission are going to pay greater deference to people who are nearer to the civic corps. And it's an open question. It comes up all the time. The people that are most directly affected, obviously, are the ones that are living on McKinley, Northampton, and and so forth. So I just put that out as, again, architects, business owners, apartment building owners, DPR, DCPL, and nearest neighbors as special constituencies that alongside developing the survey, we could be reaching out to potentially on on parallel tracks.
Okay, let me go to Cheryl Barnes.
Thank you. Um, I know that CCV has raised what may be seen by some as an inconvenient truth with the illegal zoning, but I would ask this commission to please not take CCV's word for it. How about finding a third party, unbiased, no conflict of interest zoning expert, for example, um, Richard Striner, who often testifies as an expert witness in local zoning cases, to be advised about the um incorrect zoning that DumpEd provided to developers? The zoning parameters that DumpEd provided to developers is for medium-density zoning, which is why those proposals look so giant. And that it's because they are giant. They're they're medium density. This area, according to the Flume and the Comprehensive Plan and the Chevy Chase Small Area Plan, can be zoned for moderate, not medium density. Moderate residential housing looks a lot different than those proposals. Low-density commercial looks a lot different than what the RFP uh talks about and what the, what the OP set down. I would encourage all of you to please look into this zoning issue immediately before spinning your wheels and the community's wheels on um endless surveys based on proposals that are not, that do not comply with DC law, with DC zoning law. Um, I I hate to call it a sleight of hand um by the city and by the zoning, but I fear that's exactly what this is. So please, inform yourselves and get yourselves a zoning expert. Don't take our word for it. This is why Chevy Chase needs a contested case.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, and just, you know, to wrap this up, you know, there's a lot I think the commission could have done and could do. Um, but, you know, again, I would, I am just gonna call for us to be as civil. Um, I do not think that Commissioner Goslin was trying to exclude or anybody was trying to exclude commissioners from any meeting. Um, you gotta kind of think about, um.
Tuck my hand.
Well, you can raise your hand, but I'm commenting, then I'm gonna move the segment on, because I've let.
I absolutely have to comment, Lisa, because I have an email. I have an email where he told me not to come.
And I am, I am going to discuss just the sentiment behind that.
Or to speak.
What the, what the commission was, or working group was trying to do was to get established. And I know you guys are new on this commission, but we're not. And a lot of times when we have formed working groups, the co-chairs have gotten together at the very beginning to go over administrative stuff, to try to get an agenda set, to try to get certain things set between the co-chairs. Obviously, anybody could come, but the reality is, and I think it was said at the beginning, very little was done, because there is a lot of confusion in those initial meetings. Um, and it, you know, you guys can do whatever you want. But, you know, there are some good suggestions raised, you know, about the architects. If you go back and look at the work the previous commission did, whether, regardless of how you feel about it, but look at all the meetings, all the presentations, all the people we brought in, because we work together and we plant. This commission has not been able to do that and is still not functioning to be able to do that. So I think what was trying to be done is to have a small group of people just initially establish some sort of formula to get a working group together to operate smoothly. So my perspective is, don't necessarily, you could take it however you want. And if you took it that way, then, you know, we have to think about how we communicate things, because we don't want you to take it that way. We don't want any more dissent or decision in the commission. We want people to work together harmoniously, because that is the only way we're gonna get stuff done. And I'll just keep saying, we're, we're, we're behind, we'll try to catch up and we'll try to move the meetings and get, get. And I'll just keep saying, we're, we're, we're behind, we'll try to catch up, and we'll try to move the meetings and get, get things done. But we just got demographics done at the last meeting. So we got a lot to do.
May I speak?
Really go through fluid.
Lisa, may I speak soon?
Liz, I would mind you, I have not hardly spoken this whole segment.
Well, you can speak often enough, that's like.
Call on you.
So I would like to speak.
What I'm saying, but.
I don't like what you're saying, and I'd like an opportunity to respond.
On you, that ain't got nothing to do with me. That's on you.
I would like an opportunity to respond, please.
You didn't respond, go on.
Great. I have an email where Peter expressly leads with me not to come to the meeting. And if I must come, to be silent and just listen. I don't honestly see, I'm just talking right now, I don't honestly see how I could take that differently. From how I took it, which was, don't come to the meeting, and if you must come, don't speak. That's what he said, that's where I'm going to leave it. I don't care how you try to sugarcoat it, you, or Peter, or Corinthea. I don't care how you sugarcoat it, it was absolutely outrageous and unacceptable behavior. And it will never happen again without severe reprisals.
Severe reprisal, okay. Commissioner Goslin?
Let, let me respond to both, Liz and Carol. I apologize for those notes.
I'm well fucking better.
Excuse me?
Carol Barnes.
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry.
Hang on, yes, you are sorry, and I am getting ready to eject you. Please do not do that.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to mute myself. I apologize, Peter.
My goodness.
I had hoped a small working group could put together a draft survey and bring it to the full commission, and that we would.
Which is what we've historically done in the past, a lot of times.
I have, I've learned anew that essentially each one of us are imperium and imperia. We're our own, we're our own counselors, and I, I can't, I, I can ask for, to do things certain ways, but I can't order it. And so I have, since that first meeting, that everything, invitations, memos, everything I've produced. Related to the survey group, to every single commissioner. Now, I, let me just leave it at that. I apologize for the attempt. The intention was to try for efficiency, it did not produce that. I hope we can be efficient in the next meeting, which I understand to be Thursday, and I will set that up. But I, but, so if that's.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yep.
Hold it.
You're on mute, Carol. You just muted yourself.
I don't want to prolong this, so I just want to say one thing. Excluding commissioners from, from any ANC business in which they feel that they have a place, a part, a part to play. Okay, has the effect, not just excluding the commissioner, but you're excluding all the constituents that that, that commissioner represents. And it's, it's unacceptable. I, I was elected to represent a group of people, I'm damn going to do it. If I can't come in the, in the front door, I'm going to come in the back door. The back door is locked, I'm going to break in through the basement. Thank you.
Thanks for apologizing, Peter. I, I believe you had good intent, it just did not come off very well. All right, um, and folks, please stay on mute. Boy. Commissioner Simmons, Treasury Report.
Yes, I will like to, I don't have the, the March Treasury Monthly Report available. But the only thing for this session is to have expenses related to the disposition hearing to be approved. So we have $18.54 for Commissioner Nagy, 376.
Come on, hang on, Commissioner Simmons. Can you slow down?
Oh, yeah.
And what, and tell us what that expense is for.
So Nagy is for business cards.
Okay, $18.54?
Yes, that's what the receipt said.
Wow, okay.
It's a lot. Is that a lot, Commissioner Gore?
That's cheap.
I got 100 cards, and I think I wrote to Commissioner Simmons that I do have another receipt to submit for a couple hundred dollars. For flyers, right, but I haven't submitted it yet.
Yeah, so $18 submitted for receipts. Next is Commissioner Goslin, $891.03, that is for mailers, postage, and flyers. One second. Commissioner Gore, $827.56, that is for mailers and postage. One second. Commissioner Simmons, $975.96, that is for mailers, postage, and business cards. Commissioner Grunwald, $376.46, that is for flyers.
Any others?
Nope. I do need a signature from either Commissioner Nagy or Sherman to administer these checks, as well as to send the go vocal check. So please let me know your availability to sign the checks.
I'm available anytime.
You gotta move your, make a motion to accept.
So I make a motion for these expenses to be approved and checks to be written and signed.
A second. Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. That's seven zero. Okay, any other business on the Treasurers' report?
Not for tonight.
All right, with that, there's a couple things on the agenda for May 12th that are still carryover items. But I, I think a lot of our discussion is going to be civic corps, hopefully, survey, hopefully, we have something like in hand. In the meantime, let's, you know, shoot around possible dates for special meetings, including topics. And if you all have anything for May 12th, just please email me as soon as you can. We got a couple weeks out, and I don't want to lose track of any of your items, and I'll send out a reminder. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm gonna call the meeting adjourned.
Wait, I had a community announcement.
Oh, okay, go on, Commissioner Simmons.
So for my community, community announcement is that on April 19th, in addition to the mayor's office doing an Earth Day cleanup. I will be also doing an Earth Day cleanup. We will meet at 11:00 AM at Connecticut and Livingston. I'll be partnering with Single Member District Five, Community Member. So if you don't want to go down to Forest Hill, you're welcome to come to Connecticut and Livingston and do our own Earth Day cleanup. It'll be at 11. From 11 to 12, we'll have pickers and trash bags, so please come and join us, and I'll send that out in my next newsletter.
Awesome. Any other commissioners have announcements?
We do. Can you, I'm not on mute, okay, great. I will put this out, but I just, so that everybody knows. The Huntington has been sold to an affordable housing developer called American Housing. They're planning 119 units, all affordable. They are, and they're planning to stay within the footprint and the height, and I have a lot more information to share. How many, how many units, what, what distribution of bedrooms and studios and that kind of thing, AMI. That'll all come out in, in a little report that I'm going to do. I spoke, I spoke actually with the CEO of the company.
Oh, good, okay. All right, seeing nothing else, I'm gonna call the meeting adjourned, 8:56. Bruce, you got time to log on to your game?
There you go, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.